May everybody please rise and declare the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call them in order. Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westler.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
No one for public forum? Consent agenda. Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, we have one building permit. It must have made the blessings of the building inspector.
Yes.
It did, yeah. That case should be fine. Motion to approve. Second.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, Moeller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Opened public hearing regarding the sale of property for 13 main. Has there been any public input?
I have received no input.
Closed public hearing. Resolution 2056 is authorizing the sale of the city property. Salute. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
All right, Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Congratulations.
That was it.
Wasn't that simple? That was really easy.
Sorry to keep you on. Well, Andy, we just ran through that real quick, and you guys are now the proud owner of that property.
Yes, you are.
That went faster than dialing in on Zoom, didn't it?
Well, that's good, because most of the inside gone already.
All right.
Good job, Will.
I just love that name. So you'll have to come down here, because this is bare.
Yeah, I bet well. Well, that's great.
There she comes. That's for Vicky. That's for Vicky that wanted the rough, rough estimate. There she is.
Hello.
Nice.
You sure you're ready to be here?
No.
It's not quite like that, but it's pretty cool.
Pass that one around.
Sit down and take a nap.
I think so.
Here's the... This is the agreement. Two copies of them will sign and read it.
Yes, it will.
Oh, really?
Sign one. You can have it, and one the Wiki.
Pretty cool.
Dave Janet has that abstract.
What was that?
Dave, our attorney, has the abstract to the property that he's getting updated and would get to your attorney, and that'll be the next step.
Oh, it's not to the attorney?
Well, not going to.
I don't think so, because the man hadn't said it.
Okay, you can have one.
Okay. I didn't print my name on there.
Uh-oh.
That's a mess.
Okay. We're good.
The mountains gonna be back around here.
That's what we said. It must be relocating. Yeah, don't you like the mountains and everything?
Better get it on board.
Yeah. We're moving them in, Dave.
All right. That's looking really good. Looking really nice.
Oh, yeah. Awesome.
Did you see it, Vicky?
Yeah.
I got one question, though. What time does the coffee shop get off at eight?
Suggestions? Try six thirty. Really?
We never, we were never open until five.
Quarter to six?
When we had... They was waiting outside at quarter to six.
Yeah, but it depends. I mean, if people want it by three, I guess we'll be open at five thirty. South?
So Kai, come in and do that, too.
Keep it locked. Keep it locked.
Just knock on, just knock on the door. Not too far from the south side.
Okay, very good. Okay, resolution 2057. The chief has somebody he would like to hire as a police officer. Brandon, you have anything you want to address the council?
Just really quick. Goodie Brown. I think he's a fantastic addition to our department. He's been vetted thoroughly by myself. I'm confident that he'd be a great addition to our department and serves the community well.
We met him the other night, Dave and Whitey.
Yep, it was very nice. Seems young. Yep, looks like a good candidate.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Very good.
Awesome.
Great.
Look forward to it.
And you'll be on Fourth of...
January Fourth.
January.
Yes.
Okay, we have some stuff for the proposal from the salvage yard.
I just want you all to take a look at that. It starts on page six. I'm interested in your thoughts about what it is that you would like to know when we do take proposals for the salvage yard. Couple things first that... Flip to page nine here real fast. Take a look at that plaid again. So when we had discussed with fellows at the last meeting about squaring off that parcel B, the council was in favor of doing that. So you see I wrote in there 120 feet? That is, you know, that would square off that parcel. Dave Janet's been working with, then Mike Green, about determining value of that. And don't have anything yet on what the value would be, but we would need to sell that at market value.
The depot is on that, right?
That's where the depot is.
Yes.
So what is the plan for that?
So when they, when they're figuring market value of the property, it's market value of the property less the demolition cost. But it'd be their, it'd still be their responsibility for demolition.
So they would take it down, we wouldn't take it down?
Right, true.
Yep.
Basically, we're paying them to take it down?
Yeah, through the, ultimately, a reduced price on the property. One thing really out there for the city, that the city would participate in the demolition of, is the garage on the extension of West Street. Okay, so that is ours. That's our property, but other than that, any of the other...
Wait, 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 wait a minute. I almost missed you. So I know it's on our property. Are we taking it down?
Yeah. Yeah, that we participate in the demolition of that part.
So when they do the depot, we'd probably do the same thing with our?
Yeah, we'd just share the costs a little bit on what the demolition contractor.
So when we enter into this agreement, are we gonna have a completion date of when the buildings are knocked down or whatever?
Yep. Yep, we'll go through that here in just a bit. But one thing we also asked Bill to do was to identify the location of Stormsway. Okay, now that's done. But it's, it actually, kind of strange deal. It's marked out there, kind of goes under the west portion of that garage that's on West Street, but a little bit to the west, under the west corner of that is where it's marked, so.
So is it on the street or not?
All right, so it's on the street, and then it angles off.
So is this a storm sewer or sanitary sewer?
Sanitary.
If you get on the big red boards, you'll see where it goes.
Can you tell where the pocket line is still, when you bring that apart?
If you take that 143 on West Street, like right where the three is?
Yeah.
Right there, then go over to about the number two on .82.
Okay.
And just draw a straight line. And then it ends up in the center of West Street.
They did an ingenious job of finding that.
Did you say 282? I lost you. I found the 143.
One, yeah, right there.
I just...
By the two, Vicky, on .82, and then at the top of the page where it's 447 .82 to the number two. And then the first is only two foot deep going through that middle.
So how far into their lot line does it go? How far to the west, or does it just run along that?
A quarter.
Okay.
In that parcel B.
Okay. So it just kind of cuts across that northeast corner?
The garage is totally south of that.
Okay.
Yeah, anywhere we thought it was.
With that, as you're thinking about that sewer, and then we think about the development of our outlot, I would propose then that I'd like to get a description of that sewer and have a surveyor come down, shoot a description of that, and we'll actually get an easement in place.
I think it needs to be surveyed.
So, and then on squaring up that parcel B, we'll have the surveyor come down and get that squared up and two, and we'll have legal descriptions for it. Although the legal description for what our outlot is, I mean, it's really back to the original outlot. That square off parcel next to parcel B is actually a different parcel of land right now, too, so.
It's separated on the tax roll.
Yeah. So let's flip back a couple pages to page six. One of my ideas about what we would include in this proposal to acquire this property, and this is referred to in the proposal as Outlet 20, but it's the north half of the salvage yard. Okay? So more towards the bottom of the page, detailed description about how the property would be cleaned up. So that is building removal, what are they doing with trees, specifically address what you proposed to do with the fence, and then the estimated cost of the cleanup. Then you flip to the next page, and you get to the detailed description of the proposed use of the property, and proceeding down about the description of the proposed improvements to the property. So this is where they would have things like site grading, drainage accommodations, other site amenities like lighting or fencing that would be included in that, and then we want to know the estimated cost of the property. Then the detailed description of the proposed structures to be built. They include the building size and the construction material, include a plot drawing of how it sits on the property, and this proposes to include front and side elevation sketches of the Brooklyn buildings. So that when we would get a, when we'd get a proposal from somebody submitting their proposal, it comes with these elevation drawings already. So that'd be a requirement. Estimated cost of the building improvements. And you get into the timeline, where they would explain what the timeline for the property improvements and the building improvements would be. And then lastly, the proposed purchase price.
So I know we had this in other agreements we've had, but if they fail to meet their timeline, like in the property that we had this before, 408 Main, wasn't it? What, doesn't it revert back to us if they don't make their timeline?
We've had it, we've had it there before, when we had an interest in the properties, like the 408 Main.
Right.
Yeah, that's true. When, I'm looking at the development agreement for Milton's, where the remedies are... If this were to fail to happen, the developer would repay to the city all the expenses incurred by the city. But other than that, it's just giving notice to each of the parties about the default. Not that there's gonna be a default. Everything's good.
We're fine. We're very...
We're fine, but I was just, but we're talking about the junkyard, and I just wondered, you know.
They'd want to use the same arrangement, that we would take written proposals on it then, and we'd take the information from that written proposal and turn it into a development agreement. Just need a lot more interaction with Dave Janet on this one particularly.
I think so, too.
Because if you look at page eight, that we would have them certify that they understand the property as a previously limited auto salvage yard, property sold as is, and the developer is responsible for property cleanup, and then also they're acknowledging that existence of that sanitary sewer. But I need to work on that language.
Full disclosure.
With Dave. So that's what I was looking at. I'm interested in your idea about what other type of information you would want from the developer.
About the soil test, like, didn't they have quite an issue with oil and antifreeze and all that guys?
Well, that's why, as of now, I would just look at them acknowledging the fact that that's in the salvage yard.
Wow.
And I'd put it that, so I need to do some more checking with Dave on that. The other thing is, as we look at timing about taking proposals, we don't own this property yet. I guess I would not suggest that we would quickly get the proposal document out there. I think we need to own it first, and then you take a couple months to work through a proposal process and...
Well, and you have to have a survey.
Yep. There's things to...
They don't want to do that till you own it.
So.
So are we wise to do a diligence that we would see what it would cost to clean up, say, the trees inside, just so we had an idea of what cost it would be down the line if we sell the property, you know, so we'd have an actual number?
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if you'd take a bid out there or talk to somebody that does that kind of work, just to see what the cost would be.
Why would we do that?
That would give you an idea to find your baseline on what the price you would...
Charge it?
Charge it. You know, I'm just throwing numbers out here.
We're asking them for that information about what their demolition costs are, their cleanup costs.
All right.
We need to get title, we need to get the survey, and then we'll talk about it.
I think so.
Yep.
John, you need to decide how much of an easement you want through there, too.
Like for sewer line?
Your width of your sewer, yeah.
How much do you normally get? 20 feet?
Normally, it's 20. We've got deals down here that 10-foot, and 10-foot, you can't even bring a piece of equipment in on.
You want 20 feet on each side?
No, 20 foot total.
20 foot total?
10 on each side.
Then we'll make sure we let Janet know that's what we want.
There is a lot of stuff there in there, John.
There's a lot of metal out there.
Insulators.
Yes.
I don't know where they came from.
Okay.
Probably give you a good guess.
There's six threes with bumpers about this high up in them.
Pretty cool, Ian.
Pretty cool. Be a lot cooler if we didn't own it.
It would be a tourist attraction.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to reconsider the appointment of your, your, first big historic preservation commission. So, second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, the CDVG grant program, we need to approve a payment?
Yep, so what we're doing is approving a request for a draw for the, in the amount of $20,922, and then we'll also have a separate motion to approve the payment to Region 12 of the $20,922. So we request the money, we don't pay it until we receive the money from the state. This is almost exclusively stuff on the House on South Main Street, which is Leonard's.
Can you motion to approve the request?
Salute.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, Moeller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
We need motion to approve payment.
Salute.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Moeller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, the city is required to present the initial proposal for collective bargaining. Scott?
Okay. All right, the city is presenting this initial proposal for collective bargaining. This is a kind of a two-front proposal. The first side of that is that the city would, we would propose that we would just extend the current contract for one more year in its entirety, including a 3% pay increase.
And the reason we're doing this is?
COVID-related, more than anything else. So it, you know, it allows us to have another year, get COVID behind us, be able to negotiate in traditional face-to-face methods. Right now, it's, ask me, is not able to have their staff travel, so there's some issues with that. Any comments on that, Melissa, and about abilities to negotiate?
Yeah, at this time, I'm under travel restrictions with the COVID infectious rates in Iowa. We have until March 15th by code to be done unless we were to extend that timeline. So Scott, I'll let you continue with your presentation, but I'll have to take it back to my group on whether or not they would accept the proposal to extend. I think you have an or option, too, correct?
Yeah, that's true. So, yeah, the first part would be the proposal to extend for one year. Second part of it would be, otherwise, the city makes the, this initial proposal. So our proposal, initial proposal is a contract term of one year. And lots of, lots of these contract sections would just propose to hold current contract language. Preamble would be current contract. Article one talks about the agreement, and then this does have an amendment there regarding police officers. So police officers who work on average of 80 hours or more every two weeks would be deemed to be regular full-time employees. Article two, current contract. Article three, grievance procedures. Dave Janet had proposed this, that it just clarifies 14 calendar days, and that the council has 14 days for receipt of the council decision in step three or to enter into such arbitration. Or the change there is actually the end for such arbitration with the U.S. law. Article four, Article five propose current contract. Article six, on our work, proposes current contract. Article seven, then, is wages and fringes. This changes the dates that are included there in wages. Otherwise, this would propose current contract. Article eight, on leave of absences, current contract. And Article nine, then, on miscellaneous, also provides, would suggest current contract language. Article 10, health and safety, again, current contract. Article 11, about the compliance and duration, just updating the dates. Again, the date is, our terms proposed to be one year. Appendix A is where the wages are listed, and this would propose that an annual base wage increase of 1%, and all other current language in Appendix A would remain unchanged. Add a proposal on longevity, and the, our response would be that all current contract language on longevity would be retained, so. That would be the city's opening contract proposal. Any questions there, Melissa?
No, I don't have any questions. Like I said, I'm gonna have to take it back to my group to talk with them on what they want to do. If they want to proceed with negotiations or accept the extension.
Okay. And really, that's where we're at, is that, you know, we had to present this in an open meeting. We don't have anything scheduled as far as any future negotiation sessions or anything. So everything is, would be in your court then, Melissa?
Correct. Correct.
Melissa, what's your feeling on them opening up the travel ban for you?
At this time, I, you know, I don't know. I don't know what's going on. I, I guess I can't speak on that at this time. We'll see how the infection rates go.
Okay, I just was curious. I think the, I think this one-year extension is a good option for you and for the employees, so I hope you take it some serious consideration for it.
Oh, definitely, we are taking it serious consideration. I am actually gonna be having a meeting with them, conference call with them, to discuss more. We've been in discussions. So we will let you know within a 10-day period whether or not they would accept that or not.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, we're gonna go through the departmental inventory needs assessment, and Ruth, we just want you to do first.
Oh, that's nice of you.
That's why we're here, because Bill's gonna take quite a while. I know he's just got more paper than we have here.
So, okay.
10, 24, 15, sure. You want to do the units, parts?
So just for each one of the departments, there's actually three different things here. So if you're on page 23, that's an update about the vehicle and equipment inventory. So knowing exactly what it is that we have, and lots of times, the interesting information is utilization on that, so you can see the number of hours or miles that each piece of equipment has on it, and then the total that was used during the last year. When you flip to the next page, we also do an inventory and assessment of major public facilities. So we, having the department have rate condition, the capacity of it, is there any size improvements that needs to be made, and what they think's happening with annual maintenance costs? Then we get to the third part of it, which in this case is on page 26, is the departmental needs assessment, where they've identified certain things that they would view as departmental needs.
Would that would be Eric first, then?
Okay. I would like to replace the Ferris this year instead of the Toro. The Toro was ruined for trappings, but the Ferris, which was a new mower last year, or this spring, never has operated correctly. I mean, it won't climb a hill, and it'll dig the turf out going around a tree. It's just not built the same as the Toro. I mean, the Toro ruined my interpretation of riding lawnmowers, but the Ferris got used very little this year, had less than $100 on it. Nobody would want to use it. You won't be able to climb the hill at the sewer plant or at the new lagoon. You can't stay on the hill with that thing, and when it goes around a tree, instead of, you know, the Toro will go around a tree and not make a skid mark, and this thing will make a skid mark around every tree we go around. We also go around, you know, electrical boxes and water closets, and there's all kinds of, we hardly go anywhere without turning it a bunch of times. So the Ferris, I mean, it actually mows pretty good if you're on flat ground with all the turning. It just does not mow like I don't think it should. And I even called, and they came and got it, and they took it back and tried to see what was wrong. There was nothing wrong with the steering, which I thought was the steering. So I'm just requesting that we replace the Ferris instead of the Toro this year. I'd better keep a two-year-old, $400 Toro compared to a one-year-old, less than $100 Ferris.
Where did we get the Ferris from?
The Ferris came from Robertson, or Robinson, Robinson Equipment. Same place we got the Kubota tractor from.
He's got a couple houses on the lake.
I mean, I know, I know that, and I don't, it's funny, I sound like I'm complaining about something ridiculous, but I'm sure everybody here has bought something once they thought they shouldn't ever have bought. Well, this is one of those things we shouldn't have bought, was this Ferris mower. I mean, it just doesn't mow well.
It doesn't mow around anything very well.
No, it just won't turn. And they took it, they came and got it and took it, you know, and they said they ran it around all over the place and did all these tests on it, ran it for eight hours. Well, I know when the thing left, it had 52 hours on it, and when it came back, it had 53 and a half hours on it. So they ran it an hour and a half, and that, you know, they just, they just thought I was a magician and I started complaining about it for no reason, but it just did not turn like a Toro turns.
Is this the first thing we bought from them?
We bought the Kubota.
We bought the Kubota tractor, which is a great piece of equipment.
But I mean, other than that?
No, this is the first thing, yeah.
There's a couple Ferrises in town that, where we got the recommendation that they were good. Is it the distance in the wheelbase on the Ferris compared to the Toyota or the Toro?
It just spins so rapidly. When you try to turn, it just spins so rapidly that, you know, on the other one, the Toro will more lock down on one side when you turn, and the outside wheel have rolled around. This thing just, the inside wheel just spins, and it just digs everywhere you're trying to turn it.
Have we got a price from Toro?
No. I'm not sure what we did last year.
That's, you know, I listed $7,000. So that was roughly what the trade was to purchase the Ferris last year. That was roughly what the trade was to purchase the Ferris last year and it'd be similar price for the Toro.
So where do we get the Toro from?
That's been from Carol Small.
And Harper sort of has that, so it's Toro also.
Yeah, they they do, and we've looked at at those. They the ones that they had at the at the store were residential and and we we'd look at a commercial one, but we talked to Scott about it.
He might order stuff, yeah.
But I think, but nothing against that, but small engine would have more repair ability, I think.
Yeah, but the Toro, you don't need to repair the Toros because they run forever. I mean, they're built. Just normal replacement parts, you know? We can do that ourselves. We've never had had a Toro, had a Kubota Toro anywhere, you know? I mean, but it is an easier place to get parts from and, you know, they have them on Hanes and Harry order them.
Right.
The Toro was diesel and the Ferris was a gas?
No, they're both gas.
They're both gas?
They make a good salesman.
So are you gonna go through the rest of the things?
Hey, and then you replace the Kubota mower, the other one, the older one, 15 years old, that's the one they also use in the winter time to put the broom on. And that, you know, that's 15 years old on the deck and we don't use it to mow with at all. The mower deck did not mow with anything, you know? It's just 15 years old. We do mount the sprayer on the front of the deck. And the Kubota has had some mechanical issues lately. And I know that a couple of the Bill's guys, they mentioned they would probably prefer to have a snow blower, is a broom on the front of that thing, you know? And you can get a four-wheel assist Kubota mower with a four-wheel assist that can use a snow blower easier and could also climb hills easier with that thing. But that old Kubota is about, you know, seen as better days. Three-point blade for the Kubota tractor, we need to put it in the campground, you know? The first year we had the Kubota, Steve had built his own contraption to blade the roads and when he left, he took his contraption with him. So we had no way to blade in there, you know? So we're just just a small three-point blade for the back of the Kubota tractor, you know, have those roads a lot better and be able to level off the the actual gravel sites in there a lot better too. I guess the picnic tables are kind of a new thing.
Okay, that's. We need, this is per Ricky's request. We need eight new six-foot picnic tables. Let us send down to your shoulder house.
Nice ones, not wood. Not wood.
Not wood ones?
I like the ones that John got for the.
From the prison?
We got those nice metal mesh, they're metal mesh.
Prison?
Yeah.
For that at farmer's market?
Yeah, for the farmer's market. And I think at least under that canopy, that would be nice instead of those warp-y wood ones.
Then my my cost estimate is too low.
Yeah, it might be.
So why do you probably walk with those seconds with it?
We got them at a discount rate because Kelly.
From the prison?
He he called me up and he said, I gotta get rid of them. We just can't tell anybody.
We just told everybody.
That was zooming the world.
It's over now, but the deadline's over, so we're good now.
I just think we ought to look at them, the price anyway. I just think they'd be nice, for the ones that sit right under the canopy.
Okay. And shaded farmer's market, I don't know where that came from. I don't know where that.
It frustrates them when I when I add things to their list. But anyway, this is a park-related related thing. We had talked about putting a permanent shade at at the farmer's market.
We actually talked about it two years ago. And and we were gonna apply for the SETD loan and then that sidewalk project came along, so kinda got pushed back.
Well, if the new Dennis helps, maybe we could get it, put the shade out for his bill to attach it to his bill.
Maybe some shade can off it, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Anyway, this I do want, you'll see a few things in in these lists that are that are that are there as reminders of items that we've talked about in the past. And you really gave, wanna gauge your your interest about whether we're still interested in that or not. Couple other things then, for each one of these, you'll also see other issues. This was raised as an issue about a ported place safety surface. Cost on that was was dramatic and we had not done any any further work on that. It was a couple hundred thousand dollars for that. And then I wrote wrote another one here after I talked to to Eric today about planter boxes at the farmer's market. And we do wanna still get some additional planter boxes there. And we can be able to mark off or put planter boxes so that you can't park on that the farthest east portion during the summertime. But we want movable ones, so you can park there during winter. Good one.
Do we ever have anything like for the the camp, not the campground, but the playground? Do we ever have a plan to add a little more every year?
A little more playground equipment? Not as of yet.
Does the park board work on that?
They have, they've had some initial discussions about a couple of specific pieces, like the music pieces they had talked about. And that's, that was really about that.
Are they gonna have a proposal? Do they take it to Ruth or what do they do?
Well, we'll relight that fire again. Yeah, we've had a discussion about it. We got some prices on it.
Ruth, that rock on the along the lake is 5,000 enough for that?
The what?
Where they park along the lakeshore?
Yeah.
Is 5,000 enough rock? $5,000, is that enough to do that?
Well, we don't, we've talked about, we don't wanna do it all rock, just where the towards the lake where it is so soft, right Eric? Because they back in there with their campers, that's where it's so soft and that's where they kinda sink.
That's where they have to.
We don't, we don't wanna do the whole thing solid rock, no, no. But we're going to need a lot of rock by the time everything gets straightened out down there. It's kind of a mess.
What about the carpet on the minigolf? That's still okay?
That's okay, but I cannot get lows. The strips on the edge of the carpet have disappeared and I called them 18 times last summer to get the new strips and they were, they were going to do it and then after that, they wouldn't even respond to my calls.
Ruth and Carol?
Yeah.
I made it, I'll get it done.
They put the carpet on, I'll call them. They put the carpet on to start with, but if they don't get put back on, carpet is gonna start curling up. Junior?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he's a hand. He put the carpet on, I got this.
Well, we'll figure. We'll figure on those 16 new picnic tables to for the 16 new sites. And that likely happens here in the spring, maybe before the first of July to get those.
So how many, how many sites is there total?
For the new sites?
No, just total. 185?
Hundred, something like that, right at that, yeah.
Just for your information, if you wanted to go with fire rings, like they use out of 30 acres, it'd be about 25,000 for 185.
Permanent ones? We have never, we have always gotten negative stuff about that because the camper is either over top of them or it's too close or it's this or that or, I don't know. We had it at one time. That's another thing more.
Yeah, I just like, I don't mind having the the fire rings movable, that's true. We are short on the number of fire rings we have.
How short, how short are we?
Yeah, we can use another 25 pretty easily.
So do you make the campers go get them then when you move them?
Yes.
Is there a liability issue there?
Well, I don't believe so. I mean, they have to go pick them up, you know? We we pick them up when they're done and clean up all the garbage and trash, which there's usually more garbage than there's ashes in them. But yeah, but but I'd like to get regulars, the open ring. Now the ring is with the log that's holes in them yet because some of those things are, it takes two people to move them, you know? We need to get the split rim rings, you know, use whatever they are from the junkyard are fine, but some of them we can get lately are are too heavy.
Just seems to me that they shouldn't have to go get them. I don't, but I'm not a camper, so I don't know what they do in other campgrounds, but.
Well, on occasional assistance when they come up there, I mean, we think that maybe can't handle it, you know? But but they, most of them don't complain a bit about it. There's one in 15 that wants help, you know, or something. They don't have to pick up the holiday or it's too heavy or whatever, but. But they they never complain about it.
I'm sure there'll be things that will be reviewed after.
But you're okay Eric, picking them up and cleaning up?
Yeah, yeah. I'd rather have it that way than have them, states like Ruth said, they're never in the right place, you know? And they're they're probably harder to clean out with the in-place fire ring without.
Is in front of each campsite where they have the post and you put your little cards in, is that gravel around there? Like what if we took the campfire ring and just rolled it up to the post at each spot instead of rolling them all the way back to the office and then having to bring them all the way back as soon as another camper comes? Could they be just leaned up against the post where those, your daily prep tanks go in?
Well, a lot of the campsites don't really have gravel, but I would prefer not to do that, I guess. I mean, get them totally out of there is the easiest thing because some weekends, you know, we don't, we don't come and get more than half of them anyway, you know? So they're not always, they're not all used every weekend. It's the holiday weekends, the big weekends that they're all going. Last summer, we used the locker, we were busy with the devil in there. But I would, I would just assume they they were brought back. I mean, if part of our job will be take them out there, we can do that, you know? But then they, you know, they come in after hours and the day crews not there, so I'm not the concession crews who are like hauling around or not, you know? Where else in the morning could, you know, have a list of where they go, we can take them there. But I would just assume to have them mobile, we should have them all out of there.
What's the truck got like a fork lift on it and to handle them or just a bucket?
It's gotta be just a bucket. It's gotta, we got a fork in our bucket, but we just, you know, we just manually pick up the fire rings and put them in the back of the pickup and then put all the ashes in the bucket of the Kubota, you know? It's usually a four-person, all money-borne job to do that.
Sounds good.
What else you got on page 27 then Ruth?
We didn't get it done last year. We need rock and mowers for the golf course. And somehow you're gonna get shoreline riprap along the golf course and the lakefront.
Yeah, just, you wanna talk about that a little bit Ruth, about the the disappearing shoreline through there?
It is on the golf course and along the lakefront lots. The golf course has been sinking out into the lake for the last four or five years. So something needs to be done for that be golfing in the lake.
You have to rip wrap it during the winter, you know, when there's ice out there, then you can just push the rocks out.
I don't know how it can be done, but that's what's contemplated.
I think the ice is very thick right now. That'd be the easiest way to put rock out there, to push it on the ice with a skidder.
Yeah.
You know, so as as you really look at those areas, there are areas down there where the riprap is pretty good. There's some substantial amount of of stone there. And then there's other areas where it's just not rip wrapped at all. So it's where they would beach the boats, you know, that type of stuff. It's doesn't have any rip rap there. And then on the camp front or the lakefront campsites, there's some good rip rap on on some of those areas too. But then again, there's a there's a wide area, four or five sites wide, I suppose, where there's where there's. And and is that done on purpose to leave a beach there or what?
Over on the lakefront?
Yeah.
Way over the east side there is. There's a little sandy beach there.
But is it close for boats pulling up on it? Is that what's negatively?
No, no, just wave action, you know, just nature. Anyway, we're gonna do, I think, quite a little bit more study on on that about what the proper way is for us to rip wrap that because it it does need some attention there to to know that we're not losing losing lots of ground.
So we're gonna put bigger ropes or is it what, let's see, how you gonna, so it can't, so they can't move?
Well, like I say, part of it is rip rap right now, part of it's not. So the part that's not, we would just add some rip rap to it.
We probably need to get the DNR involved a little bit too, get permission to do it, I'm sure.
Yeah, we do need a, we need a permit.
So maybe also you have the Black Ops Association, maybe they'd help out with all that, so it wouldn't hurt to ask anyway, so. So I mean, go down that steps to see where, what the DNR says, because I think they would have family, I don't say on everything on that part of it, so they would probably recommend what we should do. Because I'm sure they're, they don't want that to disappear either, so.
And then kind of speaking of disappearing, just know that that we do need to get some more sand for the for the beach, it's more on the east side. This is something that occurs periodically, that we do need to replenish that from time to time.
I was gonna back up to this thing that the mayor brought up about the road rock for the front lakefront, like maybe $7,000 is not gonna be sufficient. I mean, there's how many sites down there?
15?
15 sites down there. I'm not, I mean, I think when they bring in those those tandem trucks, they'll do four lots each, you know, three to four lots. I just think that the $5,000, I mean, $7,000 would probably do it better than $5,000. But there's there's some places that are just terrible down there, you know? It has to go quite ways towards the lake.
The guy complains all summer is the ones along the lake that was stuck in the mud or people step out and it's muddy. You gotta have rock or otherwise.
And this was a dry year.
Yes, it might rain come spring. Bill said it will.
You can only hope. Just start a project and see what it's about.
Pretty much true. Is that it for the parks?
Yep.
Perfect.
Sand for the beach?
That's what we just said.
Yeah, we get sand.
Oh, are we gonna get better sand?
It's lush sand.
It's gotta be washed sand, or else it got clay in it and it gets packed. So you gotta have washed sand.
How about the police department, you're not?
New mower.
It's one way to keep her busy.
First one, the Ram maintained four-year.
I love the bylaws.
Thank you.
Ram just maintained a four-year rotation of vehicles. It's a Ram that's in the 90s for the mileage, so it's getting there for the 100,000 plus. The Durango is in great shape. I think that has like 20,000 miles on it, a little over 20, so that's that's in great shape. Number two, the remodeled police department. This is a project that I'm doing, wanna do with the high school. And this would involves their shop pass remodeling the police department. So basically how we're doing is covering the materials. It's a win-win for both of us. They get to learn, they get to have a project that they get to do and we get to reap the benefits of good craftsmanship by the students. And so I'm looking forward to to working with Eric McCullough and his kids. Pro number three, the 1400 for a new computer. This isn't chief's office, but it's used, it'd be used by the officers, every one of us. The one that's currently in there, there's two of them, one of them, you can flip a coin every day to see if it's gonna work. It's just, doesn't work very well. Whether it's, it'll just stall up and some days it'll work, some days it won't. It's just, doesn't work very well. Whether it's, it'll just stall up and, um, some days it'll work, some days it won't. Number four, mass texting. Uh, now this is something that um, we're looking into, and I'm still doing more research on. Scott and I, we, we sat through some um, Zoom calls. And basically, this would be a benefit not just to police, um, but just for the city in general. But one of the things that we're doing some more research on is, and that I need to do more research on is, is getting the citizens involved and getting them, getting them to use it. Would they use it, and how would it be displayed to the citizens? Um, I think that would be the hang up there, but I think it's worth considering, and I think it's worth looking into it more.
Probably people with um, set phones won't be able to.
That, that, I would say that's.
I'll send the smoke signal.
Just saying.
Thanks a lot, yeah. Going back to this Ram.
Mm-hmm.
Replacement of that truck. Would we move that truck like into the parks department, or would we trade it off, or what's, what would be our? Is there any use for city use?
There is.
Yes.
Cause, so what's happened is if it was to, from the police department, we'd drop down that we'd use it as an administrative vehicle, and administrative slash third police vehicle. And like the one that we still have out there has a radio and some lights in it.
It's, it's fantastic. The, the one out there right now is in really good shape.
So, you know, we use that as the administrative vehicle, and then if, if we give one more, and you rotate that administrative one into the parks. Cause, and we've done that here with the last one, and Eric's been real pleased with, with using that, and uh, he uh,
And then what do we do with that one?
Could then either, either keep the one, the one white one that he has right now, or he's, they also have a Chevy Colorado in the, in the parks department. And we likely would get rid of one of those too.
So the one, the, the white ring that we have now, uh, that has no markings, but has the radio and everything in it. In January, when I, I did the shift over the schedule and I'm on, on call in the morning, there'll be plenty of times where I'm taking that thing home, and so I can just go from my house to where I need to go. It's in great shape. It runs real, it runs really good.
Let's not say, no sense.
Is that the one that we took to Carol?
The one that we took to Carol is in the parks department right now. That's what Eric uses now.
Oh, well, a good summertime vehicle.
It is, cause it got new tires. And, but the, the, on Eric's vehicle, the four-wheel drive didn't work, and we've never fixed it, so.
We don't need another Dodge that the, that when you're idling around town, four cylinders quit working. It's the camshaft on it.
So the bids on the vehicles are pretty minimal. Um, I haven't decided which route I'm gonna go. I, I wanna stay away from a Ram. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't care what you get, I just, we tried that with the four cylinders quit for gas mileage, but it's the camshaft after seventy-five thousand miles. We actually did that once.
Yeah, yeah, and that was on the white one, right?
See, you had the.
The one that's currently back there, that was the one I was fixed.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I don't care if Ford, Dodge, Ram, whatever, don't make any difference. It's just, we don't want that again. Otherwise, everything works fine?
Yeah, yeah. Um, checkbooks, the, the police vehicles are, are very good. The other computers great, yeah, everything works fine, body cameras are, are working. Couple hiccups, nothing bad. Um, a phone call and some, you know, walkthroughs from the IT department can't fix, so, yeah.
So how's it, just um, just for an, an update, you know, when you talked about switching them over from doing the hard copy?
Mm-hmm.
Logs, you know, how's that working?
Good, that's gonna go affect January fourth.
Oh, okay.
It goes in effect January fourth, but um, all systems are in all the cars now. They're on all the computers. Um, they are ready to rock. Everybody is, has the capability of logging in, and they're all set up. It's just January fourth.
So, so when you set this up, so you'll be able to log the hours of what we've spent over in Wall Lake, that we've got proof of that? So when we bill them, we could have a actual line of eyes?
Yes, yeah, we'll be able.
How many hours we're, we're on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever, so.
Well, the hours would be, so when you would look at it, it would say, for instance, it would be like twelve-thirty, went to the call in Wall Lake. It won't necessarily say how long they're, they've been there, but that'll be something that we can look at, like, as far as an officer say he goes and does a loop around Wall Lake. So he's gonna go there, he's gonna put himself on a call in, in Wall Lake, and he's gonna document. So it'll be in the, in the call notes, yes, but it won't say on the timeframe, the timestamp won't have it. But the notes were, yeah, the officers will have to document their, what they did at a certain call, whether it's drive around Wall Lake, or a dock complaint or something like that. They have to document it in some, in some way or another.
Okay, so then, then to follow up, then you do all that, how does that information get to Scott in order to bill him? How's that, how do we handle that part? Do we make a copy of?
The judge printed out. It's a big, it'll be just a big document.
So if, if they are on call and they go to Wall Lake, how do you know when they leave Wall Lake, if it doesn't have a time?
It will, so, you won't know exact time that they leave it unless you go back to the dispatch call and they clear it.
So like, like when the sheriff's department says twenty minutes, seat in?
Yes.
So they'll call into the?
Uh, they're, they're now ten, ten eight, they're back in service, so they'll say, they'll go, they'll show the time that they were there, and then when they're back in service.
So when they're back in service is when they leave?
That's when they leave. And, and that'd be like any call, like at a traffic stop, they say something, and then they give their ten code, saying that they're back in service, showing that they're now available. That ends that.
And they, is this something new for them, or before they just wrote it down? This is new.
This.
Are they gonna remember to do that, that's like?
Yeah, I'm going through, I'm going through with all the officers on, on their documentation, yes. So we should be able to get a print-off of all the stuff that shows what calls we went to, what time of the day in Wall Lake, what we've responded to here. Um, and it would also show, it should show if the officer does a good job of telling them back when, when they're back in service. Sometimes what happens is they'll get preempted off the call, say they're in Wall Lake, and there's a call for service in Lakeview. They'll get preempted off and have to come straight to Wall Lake without ten-eighting that last call, or clearing it. So that would happen too. But it's gonna give us a better understanding on how often we're there and the amount of time.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that when, when we're billing Wall Lake, that they know the actual hours, so it's clear, there's no gray area. I don't want no gray area, that's, because that's.
Oh, we'll see how it works out.
It, we'll have a, we'll have a better understanding.
Better than we have now.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and my first, and so I'll do it in quarters, so my first quarter, um, I'll get all the documents and I'll get all the uh, statistics of it, and I'll take a look at it, and I can present it to you guys.
All right.
Very good, Brandon. I, this is uh, I've been around here a long time. This is the first time I've seen the sheriff down here this many times. I'm pleased that we're all getting along together.
Yeah, working together is very important.
Thanks for making it work. Bill, where do you wanna start?
Oh my God. Each fifteen, I think.
Everything's good, except it left that old eighty-nine digger there, but we do, we still keep using that thing.
What makes a break? Just a chamber or something that they can? Hydraulics?
I think the last one, it worked for Denny's before. Something with the charging the battery quit working. We might get it, it was dead. It just, I mean, it's a normal truck, so. It's not even a five thousand dollar truck, if you wanna sell that truck. It's worth, it's worth it to us just to keep it on hand. When they hit that pole out there by Black Hawk Arena, we used it to hold the pole up there while we got the power back on. Then we used the other digger there to set the new pole. Cases like that. But you said, we still put a hundred hours on it last year.
Oh, it just looks, looks like you're in really good shape.
Yep. In that department. I paid sixteen, I paid sixteen.
Oh my goodness, I can't.
I was looking at trucks, and I, I can't believe it was just got a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
We had a hundred and twenty-four, yeah.
And the guy kinda laughed at me, he goes, he goes, you ain't gonna touch that truck for under a hundred and fifty thousand.
Really?
Yeah. And I looked at used trucks, and there, there is not, all of its DOT trucks are close to twenty years old, and they're just rusted out.
They're just what we got.
Pretty much, yeah. But that's what happened with the, with the dump truck this year. The sweeper has a lot of maintenance to it, just, just because it's, you know, the environment, the dust and bearings burn out and things are wearing out. That's why our next highest maintenance vehicle is the dump truck, or the sweeper.
It was out a lot this year, that was nice.
We try to run it all the time.
Don't we have a plan that we put my wage here for?
We're gonna start that. This, this year, we, this current year, we were still funding the dump truck. We'll start that same thing then for street sweeper.
Well, you know, you look at a dump truck that costs a hundred and fifty, and you can go out and buy a pickup for what, seventy-five or eighty thousand, about a blink, blink of an eye.
Oh yeah, and yeah. And the, the backhoe is showing a lot of age now too.
It's only used in hard use, you know, real digging.
Worst thing on, on them is drive them on cement, turn and wear tires out. And the, the salt from the wintertime just rusts everything out.
So you usually wash them off like when?
You don't, if it's nice outside, we're out working. So it's gotta be on a rainy day.
Right, right.
But yeah, for, for maintenance, it's, it's the dump, the dump truck and the street sweeper, the backhoe. It's good orders, still new enough. And the, with our plant, the locker department. We've basically got the whole town buried except from Seventh Street to the substation, like where Marty Maurer lives. And then from the substation through the alley over here to the beginning of the dump is all done. I mean, is all, all that's left to do. For those of you, where over there has three circuits, and that's, that's gonna be the most expensive one to do.
We usually spend eighty thousand.
That ain't gonna touch it.
What's your, what's your three line on price?
We've never boarded three lines. When they did it, they open trenched it, and you lay all three wires in the trench. I think the first section will have to be, but going down that alley, I don't know how you're gonna open trench anything anymore. And you can't, you can't bore in three lines at one time, that's nine conduits.
It'll take three bores to do it.
We had a heck of a time off the dump, just trying to put three conduits in them.
That took quite a while, too.
The only other, down the road is that sub, we repainted that, but it actually could use repainted again here. Not that I think, the subs, the substation, substation, down the road needs to be repainted.
So it doesn't like you?
No, you, you bring a crew, and they actually drip paint across the top of the fins, and, and that's how they paint it. And it's that really bad paint too, you can't even, I don't know how those guys do it, without masks on. Same stuff you use in Stewart plants and substations, or listations. But it's getting on the, this is the town repairing it twice already, so it's getting done for the second time. The water department, we're, we're below a hundred thousand gallons on average a day now. In the last three years, we were in that two hundred thousand a day range. We found one leak that I would say was leaking a hundred thousand a day.
Where was that?
By the boat ramp, remember how it was wet there, just west of the curve, at Thirty Acres Campground?
Oh, yeah.
On the south, on the north side. And we found some little ones, customers have them, where they let their meters freeze. You know, the city, it doesn't get meters, so the city eats the bill. That's why we shut the water up at those two houses that rear us, cause they, they freeze and break.
You wanna talk a little bit, Bill, about the, the water plant and the uh, the replacement of the media?
Well, I got one bid of fifty thousand dollars to replace the media on the nitrates.
But we're doing, we're do, that, we're doing okay on that.
Right, that's why you, you need to do it if everything's okay.
Yeah, we had, we had set money aside for this for a couple of years to replace the media in, in that. Fact is that uh, the plant's functioning real well, and they're able to get significant amount of throughput on there without still having to, to backwash it again, and, you know, I think we're, we're kinda in a holding pattern on, on replacing that.
I can't see spending money if you don't need to do it.
Right.
No, but we should, we should keep a reserve for it.
Oh yeah, you gotta have the money. Eventually you're gonna have to do it. But uh, some of our tests are coming back at one, and we have a lim, a limit of ten on the nitrate, so I mean. You know, the DNR might tell you it's wore out, but if the tests are coming back good, it's not wore out. And then uh, cleaning the water tower and cleaning the clear well, the clear well is the tank at the water plant on the north side, with all the black stuff on it, inside and outside. And down the road, you, you, you use the pipes repainted inside and the tanks, that's down the, you know, that's farther down the road.
How far are you, how far down the road do you think this, that would be?
Well, it probably should've been done ten years ago.
Oh, you mean down the road that way?
The reason I'm saying, is now you're gonna be sandblasting it, where before you would just painted it. Before it got to the point to where it was all rusted out. I'm saying why, we, we actually, I had the, the summer help grind and scrape off the big chunks of rust. It does look better, but there's no use of painting it until you, you gotta sand it, block it down with metal.
I'm throwing this off the discussion, so we got somebody that we're, we're putting away towards screening or whatever, making that, what if we use that money to move that up and get that?
Oh yeah, you're talking, it's, oh, I'd do that way before doing the medium.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we got some money set up for that now.
But the, the first thing we're gonna do, why is the water tower and the clear wells. You know, get those cleaned up first, and then, it just seems like there's less and less contractors every year. And some of them are coming from Kentucky, you know, farther away.
Yeah, I just thought maybe that could move up the process. We're still, we would still save the money for, when that comes, but if we could utilize it now, maybe we'd get it done cheaper now than later. I don't know, it's gonna cost us no matter what, when.
Oh yeah, it's just maintenance. The chemicals in there just eat everything away.
I don't know what everybody else thinks about that, but you know, I. What about if you just get the cost and just see what kind of money you're talking? Do you wanna do that maybe next year? You know what I'm saying? If you think that's a priority, if it's not, you know, you're the one that's got better.
We got so much stuff already in next year's books for plans. The last time I worked for, we painted them ourselves. But we were disposable, so. If you've ever painted that stuff, you know what I mean. Just bad stuff. Right now, things we're just trying to knock off the most we can with what we got and then we're chipping away at it slowly. You guys can see, we rarely get a bill from electric pump anymore, lift stations.
I noticed, you know, you used to get a couple a year.
Oh, yeah. It was a lot of maintenance, you know.
You guys, don't you go around once a week and check the electric?
Every other Friday, we check the pumps and the motors and the cheese that grows in them and.
Yummy.
Well, that maintenance seems to pay off. John, that's what we use the fire truck for. To clean the inside lift stations. We use that fire truck a lot.
That's good.
But that's the biggest things on the water department. And why do you, the biggest thing is just scheduling unhealthy and all. We can only do so much. But it's all been planned, thought about.
You gotta have a plan.
Before the other job's even completed. The sanitary, the sewer plant is all empty. That's all hauled out, the old sewer plant. It's just basically sitting there empty. But that's gonna be down the road, too, what you guys wanna do with that thing. It ain't gonna be, I mean, up. It'll be down the road. They reseeded the entire lagoon and they reseeded where they tore it down at the sewer plant. But we'll have to wait till next spring to see what happens.
They actually put all the rock out there today on the roads.
Is the road done?
Who was scraping it today?
They were finishing up here late this afternoon.
John Healy was out there, right?
Oh, is that who's scraping it? Yeah, I see them.
They tried doing it with a payloader. You can't do it with a payloader.
I thought, well, if it's cool, they got rid of their blade and they can't keep that road. You gotta be able to drag that gravel back into this.
All the tests are coming back good here, laying down the lagoon. A few problems with new tests being done, but I'm, like this week, I'm gonna run the tests out there. Because Thursday and Friday are holidays. So I'm just gonna drive them up there. It takes me an hour from here to up there.
We go to Cherokee now for testing instead of Storm Lake.
It's a brand new plant, or lab, like you should call it. Right kitty corner cross from the Hy-Vee warehouse. They're actually just putting the sign up right now. It's on the gravel road. Been really happy with those guys. They help you everything you need help with. I counted seventeen cars there, you know, people working there. So they do animal feed and everything. What's that? She might be in the, is she in the front office, Scott?
I've talked, I've talked.
I just go to the back office. All your nose. The next lift station we got planned is one right north of Brandon Pooters' new house. And you can see the difference it makes on the, on maintenance. It just frees up guys, which basically does. Instead of working on stuff all the time. But the plan is going good on the change of lift stations out. And we'll have fifteen now when they get Terrills done. Storm sewers, we clean them all the time. If you keep, if you keep the pits cleaned out, it's not gonna make its way to the lake. That's what the pit is designed for, to catch it there instead of going down into the rivers or the lake. Summer help, like, they take care of that. On page twenty, we got the dump truck for the next year to be replaced. And that will be this, next year, Scott, you think, or?
We'll have, we'll have enough money for it. We'll, we'll budget through the additional money, you know, thirty-six thousand to be, to be put into that dump truck account and it'll be ready to be purchased in next year.
Who you getting prices from? Anybody local or?
The only two I talked to was Des Moines and Port Dodge. But they got it in Sioux City, too, John. But I, after, when I found out that a hundred and twenty-four wasn't here enough, I kind of found other stuff to do. Our poor old air compressor, the head blew off of that. Took it up to Danny and Danny said, don't touch it. It's probably from the fifties, I would bet. They bought it used from Pittman. So, I mean, it was old. But it worked good for the town, you know, for thirty-five, forty years, or whatever it was.
So you purchased a new one already?
No, no. That's, that's gonna be your priority number two.
That's what Eric uses to blow the campground lines out with?
Right. And then we use it for painting the lines and also when you seal cracks, you blow the cracks out. This is up at where we bought the man left. They have a they have, they buy them new and then they rent them out. And then when they get so many hours on, then they sell them. And that's with that used one. You gave me a price of twelve thousand on that and then twenty for a new one.
That's half of what's out if you buy a used one.
Well, but don't they go completely through it before they sell it?
I don't know. You hope they do.
I already think so. Like we used to buy used high-pressure sprayers and they went, we didn't understand.
Good luck with them. I don't know. Eric's the one who used it. I didn't even use it when they rendered it.
He said he really liked it. It really worked.
Well, it would be ten times better than what we had. So you really can't compare it, you know what I mean?
Nine-day difference, you say.
And like I talked before, all the street sweepers, the Hy-Vanas. And then by the time we get to evac, the fifty thousand probably won't touch it, you know, down the road. But it's something we use all the time. Every department uses it. It goes out with the sewer jetter. You know, I mean, it's used for everything. Then the blasting, that's way down the road is the trencher.
Did we have more, sewers plugged in this year?
You've got, you've got four or five lines in town where the sewers laid really flat and you get a lot of grease from businesses. You have to do them like minimum every other month.
I just thought, I assume, this time of year, more out.
I had them out Friday doing it. But yeah, you, both, and this one right here, it just, they're just laid flat. It just thinks it'll flow good. You can, when I did the last year, I checked for streets. You can even see this year where other streets have gotten worse from last year. Like Third Street in front of Danny Cooley's. That's getting a lot of traffic, a lot of truck traffic. And then in front of Scott's house and in front of Tommy Gross's mom's house. I mean, you can see the, you can just see it progress. And the summer help does all the patching, too, on cold mix, but that's just temporary. It beats it out.
Do you have any money for a street?
That's, you know, that's the issue is that, you know, we won't, we won't have any, any street funds for, for next year. Road use taxes is down a little bit then, partly driven by COVID. But, so, money's a problem. So if this, if this would be a priority, it'd be looking at other ways to fund it, maybe likely as a, as a general fund expenditure, if this is something you wanted to do.
What we've been trying to do is repair the streets to make them last rather than let them go totally bad where you gotta tear them all out. It's cheaper to repair them than it is to replace them.
So how large a project would that be if you're looking to, you know, if we would, we're not looking at next year, but the year after?
I'm sure Bill would like to do so next year, but I don't know, we, we have some money.
Look in front of your house, Scott, you'll see it.
Yeah, I do notice.
But it doesn't, it is a benefit to the city by doing it every other year, because then you get a bigger job. And that mobilism. What's been working good for us is he's been doing jobs locally where we're already, he's already mobilized for us.
You don't have any idea what he's got going on this spring and then closer out here?
I've been hoping for him to show up this month. He just shows up, you know, at the end of the year just to talk. But I think, like, most of their jobs have been in the, in the spring, too. He had, God, like twenty trucks sitting there because he didn't have drivers. For, you know, Paul and Blacktop, Hot Mix. You know, but they did our time, it comes out at Aurelia. It's too bad you got twenty trucks sitting there that you could use that. And he ain't the only one, you know, there, it's everybody. And then we got the north half of Lake Shore Drive on, yet there. And on page twenty-one, I guess we talked about a lot of that, the water plant maintenance, we already talked about that. Rebuilding fire hydrants and replacing valves, that's a, you plan on it, but you run out of time. You go on work orders.
So we didn't do any this year?
We did, we did valves. And we did one hydrant. We did, I don't know, it's got three or four valves. And then we did one hydrant. And then we talked about the water plant. Sewer, we talked about the lift station also. I guess I gotta edit myself. The one thing I did notice, like, we've cleaned all these sewers three times. Remember we had problems out at Don Durner's lift station? Only one time have I had to hire Randy, Randy Droste to pump them out. And that was last spring when we got that melt in March, where the ground was froze. I think by cleaning them pipes, you opened up your pipes where more water could flow. Because we haven't done anything else different. And I haven't got to buy a camera yet either. Page twenty-two.
I guess let me talk about this a little bit. It's more my stuff than Bill's. As we're, as we're working with the, with the LPA, the Black Hawk Lake Protective Association, they're talking about additional projects. And they asked the city about any, anything that, that we could do, Laker-related. So this is, this would be my ideas about inventorying and mapping the storm sewer system and the tops. So that is, that's a proposal from, from an engineering firm to have them come in and assist us with the engineering on that.
Twenty-six thousand?
Yep.
Are they gonna locate the lines, Scott?
Yeah, that's, that's having them physically do a lot of the work.
But I mean, they're gonna run a wire down the lines. They're gonna say, this is where the pipes at.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I see.
They, I guess they'd have to do whatever they have to do.
Our other maps never turned out very good.
Well, I think we definitely need to know where they are, but we might make sure that that's what we're paying for.
And you want a good result when it's done.
Right.
It's done by engineers, right?
Well, I'm just saying twenty-six thousand and then it ends up being.
Nothing.
Yeah, we all have.
It either ends up being nothing or it ends up being a lot more money.
Right, well, it's, again, this is, this would be the inventory and, and the mapping, really, to help you prepare for some additional future projects.
I know, but when is the mapping gonna be accurate?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a GPS location, certainly a GPS location of the physical attributes you can see. They get GPS locations on it. Now, they're gonna assume connections between these, between the intakes.
Is that the first time we've done GPS?
No, we GPSed water and, and sanitary sewer that we had, Beanstrand Kim did that for us several years ago. And then the city actually owns a GPS system. We GPSed all of our curb stops.
It still works?
We need to get our subscription re-updated again, but that's twelve hundred bucks for a subscription.
But we can't do this?
Just, again, it's, I mean, it, it certainly is not a high priority for Bill and, you know, it's.
I've already told Scott, we've, we've got more work planned for the next twelve months than we, that's even gonna get done without new jobs.
So as I look at something like this, it really does look at having an outside, outside people come do it, you know, so it's the, having an engineer do it and then contractors on to finish some projects.
And I'm not against that. I just wanna make sure that we're gonna get what we pay for. That we are actually gonna have an inventory, an accurate inventory. Because right now, it seems like we don't know where half the lines are.
Our storm sewer mapping is terrible. And it is absolutely a need that we need to do sometime.
Right. So is this the key? Is this the answer, though? That's my question. Is this the answer?
In, in a perfect world, they would run a locator down all the lines and physically mark where the lines are at and all the intakes and all the outlets. But they're not gonna do that.
It won't be that. It would be, again, locate, like, locate the intakes and, and that they, they're able to determine which way, which way things flow and, and just kind of connect the dots.
What hurts a young person on any job, if you give them a map that the map's wrong, you're better off than having no map than giving them something that's wrong.
Well, if we do this, I'd like to make sure that we be advising what they do.
Yeah.
This is the procedure.
What other cities they've done this to, find out from from wherever, how they, do they think it was worth the money? Does, you know, I mean, I, I'm sure we need to find track, but.
This is, this is somewhat unique because we're so far behind on where we should be on this. I mean, virtually every city should have a system, have a map of their, of their storm sewers.
Exactly. Exactly. So, but let's, let's pick a town. I don't know. Man in Gary, whatever, somewhere about our size. Have they done this? Who'd they use? What'd it cost? How successful was it?
I'd have to do some checking.
That's what I'd like to know.
This, this is a huge job.
Yeah, that's what.
Lakeview's down at the bottom, you know, so you got, all the tiles are coming in here.
Good. And that's, it's a two-pronged deal on this, too. It's our storm sewer system. And then they'd also be real interested in knowing about the, basically the ag drainage tile system as it comes into the lake. That's where I see the LPA being involved. We, we shouldn't have anything to do with the, with the inventory of the tile system. The LPA can, can foot the bill on that.
Well, I guess I'd like to have some more research on it because it's, it's something that I think we need. I just wanna make sure we're getting the right thing.
There's a lot of towns, they have their manholes on their sewer numbered, their fire hydrants are numbered, but I mean, they have huge staff, you know. When you play in Ketchup, and that's what's gonna take, you all know that. It's gonna take a lot of time in Ketchup. We've, we've jetted a ton of these storm sewers, too. That jetter works great for that.
So what is your plan for next year that you have so much on the books?
The school's adding on, new transformer, new six-inch line. Bob tarrels, the campground. New homes going up. I mean.
That's three big projects. What's the little stuff?
Well, it's the daily stuff.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think offhand.
Right.
Change, our OCRs get changed out this year. That, that job itself is a two-weeks job for two guys.
Well, the good news, it's a good thing.
The town's busy.
Yeah. Well, it tells us about the city.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you know, all this new stuff that is going on, so.
I know, some people fail to acknowledge it, but it's going well.
All righty.
We appreciate everything you do, Bill.
Yeah, Bill.
Most of them know what you do.
Go ahead. Talk through that underground electric project, Bill, that, that last, there on twenty-two.
I forgot that, Scott.
Is that the fish barrier?
The fish barrier.
Yeah. Can't talk through that a little bit, what's involved there, Bill? Cause this, this is a big project too.
Coming from the, the boat ramp at Ice House Point, that's where the nearest three-phase is. You go down, catch South State Road, go across the inlet, up to Jan Roweter's driveway. That's underground. And then you gotta go overhead from the gravel road, from South State Road out to Three Hundred and Fifty First Street. It's only two-phase out there. You need three-phase. The, the new lift station, I mean, what's a lift station? The pump is, is a forty-horse three-phase. So you gotta have three-phase there. Yeah, that's, I forgot about that, Scott. That's, that's a huge job in itself.
But they're starting that in January, they're putting the pilings in?
He was here last week and he told me they're coming in the second week of January.
So they need this power relative?
No, they're gonna drive those pilings in on both sides of the road so it's dry where they're gonna be working. That's what they're doing in January. Then he called locate, locate out here at the spoil site where you dump the, uh, harvester.
Grass, yeah.
Yep, so they must be doing something out there.
There's a barrel pit. They, they listed that as a barrel pit.
That's where they're pumping it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or they're digging it out for a barrel.
We got that located today.
So.
How soon will they need power out there? A little sooner.
Are you talking to July, the completion date on that?
July, yeah, July's about the completion date.
First they told me the fall.
We'll, we'll get a project together on this to, to get bid, you know, sooner rather than later, but we, in hopes to get a contractor in here in spring to, to get it done.
Drew Wilson's getting this, uh, cell tower.
She's getting it instead of Larry.
Really?
That's how you do business, you barter, it's what each one wants, you know? Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of jobs out there.
That it, Bill? That's enough?
Wore me out, I'll tell you that, John.
I just couldn't start it.
Scott's got something for us?
Yeah, I do have a few things. Let's flip to, uh, page, just page thirty-three. Really, yeah, not too, not too much, um, spending there. I wanna bring this to your attention and, and something that we should really look at is the community entrance signs. Um, just knowing that, when they were put up, they're all put up in three pieces. And, and they're, you know, they're basically broke along the seams. And the, the one up at the school, of course, was involved in an accident here earlier this, this year. And they fixed the planter box and, and everything was okay with it. But, uh, the, the signs themselves are, are broken and we, we need to be taking a look at doing something with it. It's not something that has to be done next week. You know, we can certainly, uh, look at doing something in a year or two. But it might be another opportunity for us to take a look at some rebranding then of the city then too, if we'd look at, at some different types of signs, uh, as entrance signs. That price there is, is a true and accurate price. Expect it to be about twenty thousand dollars to, to replace those large signs. Just a little bit on computer and technology update. We set some money aside every year for that, five thousand. Uh, then a couple of these other, uh, priorities about technology and, and IT work. And this is, this is brought up more just as, to, to advise you about the status of IT work in the city. That we don't have anybody who does IT work. We, um, we address our IT concerns as they happen, never anything proactively. Uh, there's this opportunity through what's called IT in a box and it's, it's a, really, they, they, they pitch themselves as a full-service suite of, of services for IT. And that's the program that, uh, the lead of cities is endorsing, but it would be about a thousand dollars a month for, uh, for IT services. And we've talked about that for a couple of years and we've never done anything. And you know what? We, we get along just fine and we will continue to get along just fine until we don't, you know? Until we have that big problem, which will happen sometime. You know, it just probably will. Um, and then priority number four would be, uh, security glass around Kay's desk. Yes, those, the temporary, uh, sneeze guard barriers. So the question would be, again, Kay's first preference is to remove the plexiglass barrier. Shouldn't, just to not have them there. But if this is something that's gonna become the new standard, we'd get a, a permanent setup there then. The other issues there, um, uh, community center, and we'll have that discussion about how we, how we would budget for that. And does that show up in this next budget or would we just not include it in the budget and, and, um, address that if and when it comes along? Another issue that, that's, uh, never been addressed is the log cabin shingles and those do deteriorate. Uh, their wood, just those wood shakes and they deteriorate pretty, pretty quick.
They said they have to put strips down so the air gets under, but they didn't do that.
Yeah.
But Ron and the team can't do it anymore.
Ron and the team, he will not help us out.
No, no.
No. And generator for city hall, it's, we've had that on our list for a while too and just kinda keep an, keep an eye out if, if an opportunity arises. But, uh, we have a generator that runs city hall, it's just undersized. So the, really, the next step on, on this is I, I would, uh, prepare a draft of, uh, of capital improvements plan. Start to lump these things together and see where the dollars are. And see if, if we would have enough money in our budget to, to do these items or, or what, uh, where we need to be looking at prioritizing and kind of dropping them down the list.
Okay, do we have a city administrator to report?
Just, uh, just a couple of things. Uh, really, I put this under my report because it just, it can just be a quick one about the financial analysis for water and sewer that shows that we're actually okay on, uh, on rates for this year. So this will be, this'll kind of be celebration for the sewer. That for the past six years, we've had twelve and a half percent increases. And, um, things have, have come through to, to be the way they were supposed to be. We've increased the rates enough that, that we do not need to look at, uh, uh, subsequent increases here for this upcoming year. Now, I talked with our financial advisor about that, really suggesting that we ought not to do that. Initially, he said, you know, you, still if you'd raise it two percent, you, you would be, you would feel more comfortable about that. Um, but he says, you know, you're, you're gonna be fine. And actually, when you look at the analysis, it actually says this year and the following year would propose, uh, no sewer rate increases.
I think everybody needs a break in twenty-two.
Also, your maintenance is making a difference too.
Yes.
On your costs. I agree with you, Nicky, too. You need a break.
Definitely.
I do want to point this out to you though. Let's look at page thirty-four and really just look at the bottom line of page thirty-four. About what our fund balance is in the water fund. Yeah, so our total, our total budget in, in the water fund is two hundred and seventy to eighty thousand and our fund balance there is between fifty and sixty. So we, we never have kept a significant amount of fund balance in the water. You know, and, and if, if there comes a time when we have real difficulties and we gotta spend some money, we'll have to address it at the time, but just know that there's not a, not a large fund balance there.
We just have to live with it.
Um, we paid off the debt on the plant here in June. Was our last, was our last debt payment, so that, that helps us on that.
Sends us a piece.
Yeah, we paid for twenty years on that.
Yeah. That was the plan.
Uh, just, uh, a couple of things about holidays here. Holidays for the city are Thursday and Friday, uh, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and then, then just January first. Those would be the holidays. Uh, we will have the city employees' little Christmas party, which is basically just sharing, sharing some food amongst ourselves. Wednesday morning around nine-thirty, around nine-thirty. And, and if council members can't attend, that'd be good. It'll be here in the council chamber.
Motion to adjourn?
Yo.
Second? Need to adjourn.
Nine-thirty?